I'm going to call the meeting to order, the meeting of April 12th, 2021. And I'll ask Commissioner Donner to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. That brings us to the first item, which is roll call. Can you do a roll call for us?
Please let the record show that all commissioners are present with exception of Commissioner Opal, who is absent.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I move that we approve the minutes. All right, we got it first, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, second. Go ahead and vote. I'm going to touch your screen, Danny. Okay, and that item passes with Commissioner Opal, who is out tonight. Moving on to item B, public comments. Do we have any public comments tonight?
No, Chair Nelson.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and skip reading our public comments section. And then on our consent calendar, I don't see any consent calendar items, is that correct? Right, okay. Which will bring us to public hearings. Item number two, which is coastal development permit, CDP 20-0028, and site development permit, SDP 20-0030, for a 68-square-foot addition and remodel to a single-family residence located at 35537 Beach Road. Do we have a staff report?
We do. Senior Planner John Champa will provide a staff report.
Good evening, Chair Nelson. Planning Commissioners, John Champa, I'm going to be presenting to you the Torres Residence, which is a request for coastal development permit and site development permit. The project is located within the Capistrano Bay Community Services District, or also known as the Beach Road Community. Project is located within the RBR 12 zoning district, and is also located within the Floodplain Overlay, or FP3, and within the coastal overlay, as well as the Coastal Commission Appeals jurisdiction area. Just to give you a little background on this property, the structure was originally constructed in 1948. It's a single-story, single-family residence. Over the years, the residence has experienced a number of improvements, resulting in the structure to be two stories, 1,689 square feet, with a, I'm sorry, that should be a 224-square-foot one-car garage. The structure is legal non-conforming because it's a slab-on-grade foundation in the Floodplain Overlay District, which requires structures to be constructed on caissons and elevated above coastal wave action, as well as it does not comply with the required front and northwest side yard setback. The project scope before you today is for a 68-square-foot addition, remodel, new roof design, as well as facade enhancements, and resurfacing of the deck, in addition to a new second-story balcony. The second-floor interior remodel would combine the two bedrooms and create a master suite on the second floor. If approved, the project would expand the structure to 1,757 square feet. This is the existing design of the structure. As you can see, it's typical of its period of construction in 1948, as well as the additions in the 1970s, with a very nondescript design. However, as part of the project is proposing to enhance the facade. Here, we've got a table of the development standards applicable to the RBR 12 zoning district. And as you can see here, there are a few of them that are non-compliant, associated with the incorrect placement of additions that had occurred over time. Those have been noted as the variances at the bottom here, associated with the reduction of the front yard setback to 10 feet, as well as a variance for a zero-foot side yard setback on the west side yard area. However, unfortunately, those were placed incorrectly. However, the project design is not associated with those setbacks and is in compliance with the required setbacks for the zone. This is the site plan proposed. As you can see, the proposed addition is centrally located on the building, on the seaward side of the second-story element of the house, and is in compliance with all the applicable setbacks, including front and side, as well as the height of the structure. Here's the second-floor plan proposed. As you can see, we have highlighted here the remodel areas for that master suite, as well as locating the addition, which would be over the garage, as well as the attic space for the structure. This profile is intended to provide the illustration of the increased cubic area of the structure, with the new roof design, as well as the attic space proposed over the garage. Here, you can see the proposed rear and front elevation. And what we have here is a proposal to modify the design to a coastal modern, while still retaining the majority of the structure. The project is in compliance with the required coastal development permit, given that the project conforms with the city's certified local coastal program, in that it complies with all the applicable setbacks, as well as the requirements for coastal zone development. And there are no impacts to public access or recreation in that it is within an existing private community. And there is public access that is located to the north and south of the community at Capistrano Beach Park, as well as Poche Beach. The project is in compliance with the limitations for legal non-conforming structures for the site development permit, in that the project complies with the limited one-time 10% improvement, as well as the 10% annual valuation remodel limitations as conditioned, in that the proposed addition of 68 square feet, as well as the cubic area expansion are less than 10%, as illustrated in the plans, as well as the remodel valuation is 30%. And would, as conditioned, the property owner would sign an agreement limiting future improvements for the next three years, which would begin at the date of permit issuance for the proposed project, if it were approved this evening. Staff has reviewed the project and determined that it is in compliance with the required findings for the site development permit, as well as the coastal development permit that's in compliance with the city's local coastal program, as well as the required policies for the Coastal Act, and the necessary findings identified in the city's zoning ordinance for the coastal development permit and site development permit. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Champa. Does any of my fellow commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Gabbard.
Has the applicant looked at the agreement that they're going to be entering into for the restriction on improvements for three years?
Yeah, I believe that staff has provided an advanced copy to the applicant, and they have shared that with the property owner. And that was a discussion of, early on, in the pre-application phase of the project.
Yeah, just, I bought property a few years ago, where there was a deed restriction on it. And I tried to get it removed, even though it was blatantly unenforceable. And we couldn't get it removed from title. This is probably going to be something very similar. So I just want to throw that out there, that this thing is going to stay on title, even though it may not be enforceable in the future. It's likely to stay there.
Hey, Commissioner Donner?
Jonathan, would you explain the valuation, the 108,000? Is that an actual number? Or is that something that a commission comes up with?
So the number is based on the building. Department has established a valuation sheet for improvements. So it doesn't take into account any land value, or, you know, current cost of construction. It's typically based on a cost per square foot of the improvements, as well as the existing structure. So it's an established sheet of valuations that staff goes off of to determine, based on the scope of the project, what the proposed improvements are associated with. And that's how that's determined.
And the projection is to limit any future changes for three years until that amortization of the 10% versus the 30%?
That's correct.
And how did you come up with the 30%? Is that just taking the 10% and escalating it?
So as part of the valuation sheet, it also allows us to determine what the valuation of the structure is. So we base that off up to see, okay, what is 10%? What is the proposed project value, which was determined to be 30%? So that's all that was determined.
Thank you.
Commissioner Murphy, you have any questions for staff?
That the hatch is not accessible, this is really tiny, it's not accessible from the living space. So does this, in some part, then say you can't use all the square footage together? You have to put aside this little hatch? Or, I'm just looking here.
Yeah, so staff wanted to make sure that the attic space over the garage was not going to be, you know, able to be converted in the future. So staff wanted to ensure that that space was only accessible from the garage, and which the applicant was able to provide that note to ensure that, one, that it's limited in terms of the future expansions.
So the applicant is fully aware of that?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I've got a couple of quick ones for you, Mr. Champa. Let's see here. In looking at the plans, and if the applicant's here, they may need to address these, or you can. The sheet G7, which is the demo plan on the second floor, it's, I'm confused by the note. And maybe there's just, it's a note issue, but it has this removing the partition wall, but only drywall, electrical insulation to remain. But if the wall's gone, none of that's going to remain. Down the center, the first big joint in the room, they're making two rooms into one?
Correct, yeah, that may just have been a note carryover.
Okay, so that, just one quick. And then, I'm curious, on the lower roof plan, in the attic that is uninhabitable, there's a skylight. And I'm curious to know what that's for.
So we've discussed this with the applicant, and that's to bring light into the garage area. And if you look on the sheet A3, it'll illustrate that there's a rectangular box in that attic area that is open to below, to allow that light to shine through. Because as the current configuration, there is no natural light or any windows to that space. So that's the request.
Got it, okay, that makes sense. You know, you always want to make sure we're not setting somebody up for, you know, something down the road. And not that I would expect the applicant to do that, but attic space typically doesn't need natural light. But I could see why the garage would, if you're going to be inside there. So that answered that question. I mean, I know we've seen this house before, at least once, if not twice, on full scrape and rebuild, if I'm not mistaken. So I know that it's, you know, been a discussion here multiple times. I know in the past, we've talked about the 10% issue. And, you know, I guess my question, maybe for the city attorney, is as it relates to the condition that deed restricts, is there a way for that to look backwards, too? And so you look forward and back, as opposed to use it or lose it? You know, even if that needs to come from a policy space? I think we want to make sure is that homeowners there can keep their homes safe and airtight. But if they have to basically secure or prevent themselves from doing that for three or four years, because of this 10% rule, if we can look out to the future, can we look to the past as well?
Can you point me to the specific condition that you're looking at right now?
Yeah, I think it's 28, if I'm not mistaken.
I can hop in and help with this, too. Is that when the initial kind of policy direction was on going beyond the 10% and conditioning that, one, it was specifically, a question was brought up, two, could it be applied in reverse? And the city felt like it was positioned to only allow this to move forward. However, in the event, let's say someone were to take it, and do the improvements, sign the agreement, and then have some kind of a roof leak, or lose their water heater, or something like that, those particular items would be allowed to be completed to ensure that the structures are safe and habitable.
Gotcha. It's at condition 27. And I don't know that it's critical for tonight, but it's definitely something, I think, you know, understanding that there's homes down there that are 40, 50 years old, and they're sort of limited in basic protection, unless they deed restrict it going into the future. I think that, you know, if we can afford them in the future, maybe the past, we can look back three years and say, if you haven't done anything in three years, you can carry those three years forward. We don't need to do that tonight, but just something I think maybe down the road we should talk about.
That's certainly something we can take a look at.
Okay. I have no other questions. Do we have any, so let's close or open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers tonight?
No, Chair Nelson.
Okay. Close the public hearing and take it back to the commission.
Looking at, the improvements will be dramatic, and will enhance the area. So I fully support this project.
Commissioner Murphy?
I agree, and it looks really fun. So, yes, that looks, and it will fit very well down there.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Gabbard?
Yeah, I support it as well. I think that it certainly is keeping with the design standards, and it's certainly an improvement for the community. And it's something that I look forward to watching being developed.
Great, thank you. Well, it sounds like we're all on the same page. I don't have much to add, other than I agree. It's a good-looking project. Hopefully something moves forward here quickly. And do I hear a motion, Commissioner Donner?
I move that we approve coastal development permit, CDP 200028, and site development permit, SDP 200030, for a 68-square-foot addition and remodel to a single-family residence located at 35537 Beach Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Murphy. Let's go ahead and vote. And that item passes, congratulations. All right, that brings us on to item 23, right? Item 3, which is a tentative parcel map, TPM 19-004, for the subdivision of one lot into two lots at 35356 Delray. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, John Champa will also provide a staff report for this item.
Good evening, Chair Donner, or good evening, Chair Nelson. And Planning Commissioners, John Champa, case planner again for the Delray subdivision. It's a request for a tentative parcel map to divide one lot into two lots. The project is located within the Capo Beach community, within the city of Dana Point. It is in the RSF, or Residential Single Family 7 Zone, and it is a 24,000-square-foot lot. Just to give you a little background on this property, the residence at the front of the property has been the subject of a code enforcement case for illegal renovations, and is a sense of disrepair, and has been the subject of the code enforcement case since 2017. And the illegal improvements to that structure have rendered it uninhabitable. However, as part of this application is to address that issue, abate it, and remove the structure, to bring the property into compliance. So the project's scope is, as stated, to subdivide the residential lot into two lots that would be conforming with frontage along Delray. So the property would, or the project would result in the property being split down the center. And each lot would have vehicular access off of Delray. And as stated, the illegal structure would be demolished as part of the project, and is conditioned under Condition of Approval 28. This is the existing, some photos of the existing site. As you can see, there are two structures there, as well as a large vacant area. So as stated, on the right-hand photo, the structure here would be removed, and the rear structure, which is on the left-hand side, would remain. However, the vehicular access would be shifted to Delray, which is also illustrated on the tentative parcel map. The proposal would comply with the minimum lot size and dimension, as well as width for the RSF 7 zoning district. And that, given the property's large size, it's able to easily accommodate two lots. This is the proposed configuration. As you can see, as stated, the lot is split down the center with parcel A and parcel B. And as notated on the plan, the front structure would be demolished, thereby abating any of the code enforcement issues associated with the property. With that, the project does conform with the required general plan and zoning code requirements, as well as the required findings for the tentative parcel map, and as stated, the demolition of the illegal structure. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the tentative parcel map, subject to the findings and conditions of approval in the draft resolution. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Do any questions for staff? Commissioner Murphy, any questions?
No, my question was, because I've been there quite recently, and I jogged past our lot. And they are, to me, they look like they are two mirror images. Is that correct?
Yes, as proposed, it'll be two mirrored images, lots with almost identical same square footage and frontage.
Okay, and there is a structure on there that has like a watchtower or something. What will happen to that?
So that's part of the illegal improvements. That tower may not necessarily be illegal, but due to the extensive work done, and it being uninhabitable, that structure will be removed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Vice Chair Donner, do you have any questions?
Yes, Jonathan, on parcel B, the existing home is really not on Delray, but it's access from the side street? But it's going to be reconfigured so that it'll come in from Delray?
Correct.
And will the parking areas then be eliminated on that side street?
Yes, so those improvements will be addressed as part of the demolition of the structure.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gabbard?
Thank you. Is the full extent of the code enforcement actions simply the removal of the existing structure?
And to address any code enforcement issues associated with the property.
Okay, so the structure comes down, there's no other code enforcement issues related to the property?
Correct.
Okay. And this is more for the applicant. The condition, as it's established under number 28, requires that you comply with all of the code enforcement requirements for the property. And I just want to tell you that if you don't comply with what the director tells you to do, this entitlement will evaporate. Just, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say.
We're going to just call it's order, so we'll have a comment. We'll let you come back up, but let me, let's get through the horn here first. Okay. Is that it? Okay. I have no other comments or questions, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm going to invite the applicant to come back up. Well, I think there was going to be an exchange between you and Commissioner Gabbard, so I'm going to make sure that if you have anything that you want to say, feel free to come up now. I'm opening the public hearing. Yeah, I'm sorry, we're speaking from the back of the room tonight. So give us your name, your address, if you could, please.
Sure, my name is Robert DeMaro, and I live in Oceanside, California. I am listed here as the applicant, but I'm actually just the civil engineer that prepared the plan. And I do understand, though, that the house has to be removed, and the applicant does understand that. And I'm sure if there's any other things that need to be done to be in compliance, they'll be happy to do it. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments tonight?
No, Chair Nelson.
Okay, thank you. So go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Kick it off.
I'm going to support this. You know, from a planning standpoint, it makes sense. I pause when we are, when we've had a project that has had four years of code enforcement action, and we're dangling a very large carrot in front of them. So it gives me, that gives me some pause. But I think from a planning standpoint, and what we're trying to get accomplished, I think it makes sense, so I'm going to go ahead and support the project.
Thank you. Vice Chair Donner?
I totally agree with Commissioner Gabbard. I had concerns about the problems we had here, but if that's going to eliminate the future problems for the city, and will improve the neighborhood by removing that, the existing property that's redlined, then I will support the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy, do you have any comments? Yep, okay, great. I concur, Mr. Gabbard, or I see it the same way you do. Good planning effort. And, you know, it's always interesting when we get these code enforcement cases up here, because I think my gut initial knee-jerk reaction is wanting to punish. But it doesn't appear that that has worked in the past, so hopefully the applicant can fulfill their obligation. And, you know, now they've got something considerable on the line. And, you know, otherwise, you know, we need more housing and splitting the slots, so more homes can be built, seems like a good idea. So with that, do we have a motion?
I motion that we approve tenant tract map, TMP 19-0004, for the subdivision of one lot into two lots at 13, oh, I'm sorry, 53536 Delray.
Second.
All right, let's vote. All right, and that item passes, congratulations. Which brings us on to, that's the end of new business. We're on old business. Item E, which... Item E, which, which is item number four, enhanced regulations affecting short-term rentals.
Yes, good evening. We are here back to talk about short-term rentals. We have been briefing the planning commission on the subcommittee's efforts for the past six months. And during that period, we've done some public outreach, collected some public comments. So tonight, we're here to seek the planning commission's recommendation related to the short-term rental business regulations. Tonight, we're not talking about new short-term rental permits or the location of permits, we're purely talking about how to regulate short-term rentals as we go forward. So also want to welcome the public. We have gotten the green light to allow more of you here tonight, since we have gone into the different tiers. So thank you for being here. So going forward, for tonight, we have a potential approach where John and Jeff Rossler provide a staff report. And we welcome you to ask questions of staff during that time. And then following public comments, then my suggestion is to bring it back to the planning commission for you to review the regulations individually, looking at attachment one, to allow you to go through and develop a consensus potentially on and moving those things, those forward. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to John Champa.
Good evening Chair Nelson, Planning Commissioners. So I'll be providing, Jeff Rossler and I will be providing the presentation this evening on the short-term rentals. Just to give you a little update or background in terms of the outlined approach, based on the guidance from the city council, it has resulted in breaking this process up into two phases. Phase one is what we are considering this evening as a recommendation to the city council, which is for the development of new and enhanced regulations for the existing short-term rentals. The focus on this is to increase the penalties and address community concerns related to parking noise and trash, which are identified as some of the key concerns based on community feedback. Phase two, which will happen later this year, possibly as soon as June, would include the consideration of a short-term rental pilot program for the issuance of additional permits and enhanced regulations and best management practices. Those standards and regulations would be guided by the public outreach process, which would continue. So the planning commission on September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, created the, the subcommittee for short-term rentals and to conduct public outreach as well as research and consider the identification of enhanced and new regulations for the existing short-term rentals, as well as the consideration of the short-term rental pilot program as part of phase two. So the efforts of phase one to date include the development of a public outreach program, research short-term rental regulations for coastal communities as well as non-coastal communities, the development of informational flyers, the update of the city's short-term rental webpage, which has resulted in sub-pages, I believe five in total, the development of a short-term rental map as well as contact list for the community, the conducting of short-term rental stakeholder meetings, as well as the recommended regulations and identification of items for discussion which are for this evening. Here is an example of one of the flyers for the short-term rentals is available to the public, as well as guided the additions to the city's website. These are really focused on reaching out to different groups. This first one is really an example of kind of telling the story of the existing short-term rentals, where they're located within the city, as well as their distribution by district, as well as identifying what the rules and regulations are for them, as well as enforcement statistics. This next one is for neighbors and guiding them on enforcement, identifying what are some of the key nuisance and regulations, as well as the guiding them in terms of if there is an issue, how to submit your complaint. Then next, we do have how to be a good neighbor for the occupants of the short-term rental, as well as the property owner and/or manager, notifying them of the importance to be a good neighbor, as well as the regulations, and, you know, just providing them reminders of how to, how to conduct themselves in the unit. And then last is the short-term rental pilot program and providing information about what that will be and the process associated with it. So the public outreach also included the stakeholder meetings as previously discussed. Those occurred on the second or third week of January of this year, which staff, staff and the subcommittee created different stakeholder groups with different perspectives to get input on the existing short-term rentals, as well as we'll be reaching out to them in the near future for input for phase two. So these stakeholder groups were intended to be diverse and the, the organization of them included short-term rental permit holders, management companies, neighbors of short-term rentals, as well as community groups, so that the city was insured to provide, or receive a diverse feedback on short-term rentals. And so the recommended regulations before you today were guided by that public outreach process. So with that, I'll be handing it over to commit, Jeff Rossler, who will be going over the code enforcement statistics and operational measures.
Good evening. So just a quick look at the existing short-term rentals within Dana Point. As of today, there is a hundred and thirty-seven short-term rentals. Forty-two percent of these are found in voting District Five, which is Capo Beach, including the cluster, large cluster on Beach Road. Twenty percent of these are also found in District One, including a large cluster around the Cornish area. Both of these clusters, I want to point out, fall within the coastal zone, which is that light blue line that travels through the, the front of the map. As John pointed out, this map was something that the subcommittee wanted to see and wanted to see available online. And this map is available, interactive online for you guys to see. You can go to the code enforcement page and follow to the short-term rentals and find the map from there. And when you hover over each of the green spots, it'll give you the address, the owner op, and the manager and contact information as well. These are all added features that were suggested by the subcommittee. The creation of the program for permits in two thousand sixteen also increased the code enforcement staff by one full-time employee. Since that time, the same officer is overseeing code enforcement cases relating to STRs. You can see here the cases from two thousand sixteen through two thousand twenty. And you can see that all those in blue are for advertising for illegal short-term rentals. The code cases in orange are for public, or for nuisances at the permitted STRs. The majority of our emphasis was kind of curbing those illegal STRs who are renting or advertising without city-issued permits. As these issues or efforts of code enforcement has increased, so have the citations for illegal STRs. And you can see that in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, you see an increase in those citations. Part of that is due to increased effort, I believe, but part of that is also due to having a third-party contractor help us kind of identify those illegal advertisements and sending notices, creating those code enforcement cases, and then following up with citations. Note the difference between the last two slides here, that not every code case results in a citation. Some of them, a code case can be open and a violation doesn't necessarily have to take place. And so it could be like a false nuisance report. Or in some of them, they were fixed through voluntary compliance without an additional step in enforcement. Oops, did I skip one, John? So this is just looking a little more in-depth at some of those actions. During that time, we've had four hundred and ninety-three cases for illegal short-term rentals. And of those four hundred and ninety-three, two hundred and fifty-six citations have been written for illegal short-term rentals. Those are ones advertising or operating without a city permit. When citations are given to somebody, they have a fifteen-day, I think, appeal period where they can request a hearing and state their case in front of a hearing officer. We've conducted twelve of those hearings for citations for advertising for illegal STRs. And of those twelve, we've won all twelve of those cases. And all the properties have subsequently stopped advertising. One case is currently being processed by the city attorney for continued defiance of operating and advertising an STR without a city-issued permit. And, you know, I, I don't, I believe we've said it before, sometimes it's whack-a-mole, where we'll have a case against them, they'll take it down, the advertising, and a month later, we're following back up with them. And this is a repeat offender, and we're working with the city attorney's office to gain compliance. Something that we started in two thousand twenty during peak visitation season was additional code enforcement outside the nine-to-five banker hours. They also conducted sixteen, over sixteen hundred windshield inspections, where they went to each and every one of the STR properties and looked at if there was anything out of order, if there was a nuisance, if there was trash, if there were other violations on the property. We did a hundred and twenty-eight hours outside of that timeframe that I told you. So off-hours, usually between six and ten, but sometimes we went as late as midnight between July two thousand twenty and October two thousand twenty. This is something new we tried. We wanted to get the guys out there when there was peak season, where there could be violations, where there could be nuisances. And we were able to curb some nuisances. There was actually one that went through the hotline that we received, and then we went out to the property and was able to fix a violation during that time. We've also been collaborating monthly with the Orange County Sheriff's Department to review STR complaints coming directly to their department. And we get those in a report monthly. We review them and follow up that, when they haven't come directly to the hotline. We've also, through that, being out there in the field, especially during nights and weekends, we've increased our communication and collaborations with H O A Security, specifically on those two large clusters that I mentioned, one on Beach Road and one in the Cornish area. You can see here, because tonight, we're talking about nuisances, so we want to look at, you know, is there really a problem with the nuisances at the short-term rentals that have permits? We're operating that twenty-four-seven complaint line that was started in two thousand seventeen. So we went back and looked at two thousand eighteen stats, two thousand nineteen stats, and two thousand twenty stats coming from that hotline. So for noise during that time, we got fifteen complaints in two thousand eighteen for noise at a permitted STR. Code enforcement followed up. We found legitimately, there were two legitimate complaints for noise, and they subsequently were issued citations. You can see that there was one trash complaint and that did not result in a citation. In two thousand nineteen, there was seventeen complaints for noise and one for parking, respectively. Code enforcement investigated all those cases and did not find any to be egregious enough where there was a citation issued. In two thousand sixteen, or excuse me, two thousand twenty, we had twenty-six complaints. So the complaints were up into the hotline for nuisances. And four of those were validated and four of those resulted in citations for noise specifically. We had two complaints for parking, one for trash, respectively, and none of those were validated and none of those resulted in citations. So it's important to point out that what we're talking about tonight are those nuisances for noise, parking, and trash, and how to beef up our regulations moving forward. Thanks, guys.
So with that, and moving on and looking at potentially new and enhanced regulations for the phase one consideration for short-term rentals, the subcommittee and staff had identified a list of recommended regulations. And those are based on and provided to you as a developed list with those enhanced and new regulations. And so these are the basis of the research stakeholder meetings, as well as the short-term rental public workshop. There's also regulations that are up for discussion and requesting the planning commission debate amongst them, which is recommended from staff and the subcommittee to come to a consensus and a formal recommendation of those to be forward to the city council. So with that, I'm going to be going through those items. And where applicable, referencing the, the code section and regulation number. So with that, I'll just be referencing that last-digit number, which is how it's organized under section five thirty-eight zero eight zero A. So first up is recommending that the, the renters sign a good neighbor acknowledgement and post that within the unit. So that would basically have the tenant or the, the guest signing that, reviewing it, to ensure that they're complying with all of the applicable regulations, similar in information to the flyer that was produced. In addition to that, requiring that all of the regulations be posted within the unit in a conspicuous location. Another recommendation, number seven, is to add corporate meetings to the list of not permitted activities for short-term rentals. Regulations that are up for discussion include that no amplified noise shall be heard at any time of day at the short-term rental property line. The subcommittee and staff were favorable to this and that it is easily enforceable and support the regulation. In addition to that, no noise should be heard at all from ten PM to ten, or to seven AM at the short-term rental property line. So this is also easily enforceable and supported by the subcommittee as well as staff. One of the items that came up for discussion through the public outreach process was establishing a maximum decibel level specific to short-term rentals. Staff has evaluated that as well as the subcommittee and determined that it may be challenging to enforce and is not supported. However, there are other recommend, recommendations that staff feels like and the subcommittee believe that will adequately address noise issues. To continue on in terms of the regulations for discussion related to noise, an item that came up was requiring noise monitors to address noise issues and verify complaints, as well as notify code enforcement. These have been found to be, produce false readings. So staff is not supportive, staff and the subcommittee are not supportive of that. In addition to that, another item up for recommendation was that requiring properties to post a notice of violation on the property that would remain for six months to, to identify future renters of the, of the past violations. So staff also has concerns with this regulation and believes that other recommended regulations will, or should adequately address those issues. Next topics up are for parking and trash. To include into the good neighbor acknowledgement, which is also in the flyer that was, is illustrated to you previously, is the request that all tenants be parking in the driveway or the designated garage to ensure that it's not impacting street parking. To note, as Jeff had mentioned, there have been two parking complaints and there have been no citations within the last three years related to parking. In addition to that, with, with trash, one of the recommendations was consider CRNR walk-up trash service, which is where C N R truck, route drivers will grab the cans, bring them to the street, unload them, and then bring them back to a designated location. Given that there's only been two trash complaints in the last three years and no citations, staff does not feel that there's a need to provide that operational requirement on the short-term rentals operators. Next item up, and these are all recommendations from the subcommittee and staff, are contact information and response time. And first is, where currently it requires the property owner, or property owner and manager to live within twenty-five miles of the property. This would be revised or recommended to be revised to twenty minutes from the short-term rental. Additionally, that the short-term rentals provide the property owner, manager, contact information on the exterior of the unit, that is the city-approved size and design that would be legible and visible from the city right of way to ensure that if there is a passerby and they have an issue, they can immediately call and contact them to address the issue versus going online and trying to figure out the contact information. Additionally, would be amending item eighteen of the regulations to require that the owner, manager abate an issue within twenty minutes. manager abate an issue within 20 minutes, and acknowledging that in some cases, the owner or manager may need to be, arrive onsite to address that issue, and that would need to also comply with the 20-minute requirement, and that would be upon receipt of the complaint. Additional expansion to those recommended regulations include requiring the online platform to require an online, or I'm sorry, to require a field in the short-term rental. Advertising online, that they include the permit number, so this would aid in the illegal advertising of the short-term rentals, which code enforcement has had a significant number of cases to address. In addition to that, is, would be extending the minimum age from 18 to 25 years old, which would be for Regulation 9. In addition to this, just the standard regulations, violations and penalties were identified for enhancement, and this would include revoking the short-term rental permit after three violations, as well as increasing the fines to the legal limit, which right now are at $1,000, but there's pending regulation to increase those up to $5,000. So city staff is recommending that, as well as the Subcommittee. And then one of the items for discussion is that in some instances, there may be an egregious violation that should not be reset annually, whereas currently, the regulations are for a 12-month period, or I'm sorry, the violations are for a 12-month period. And in this case, if there's a significant violation that does occur at the property, then that would remain on the record. So if one year they had one egregious violation, and then the next year they had two violations, that would be it. They would, their permit would be rescinded. Best management enhancements have also been identified as part of the public outreach effort by staff and the Subcommittee, which identified requiring the online platforms to collect TOT tax and provide audits of those, the TOT funds. So the city is exploring different vendors that would be available to provide this auditing of the TOT, and offer a 24-hour hotline service to address immediate follow-up of any issues. And the city is currently, the hotline that has available under contract is just for documenting complaints and receiving them, and which Jeff had, has mentioned. So in addition to that, one of the items that Jeff had highlighted is the Short-Term Rental Map, that identifies the property owner, manager, contact information. So that has been up on the city's website since February of this year. And then also, as Jeff had mentioned, extending the code enforcement hours during peak times is anticipated to continue. So with that, the next steps would be for the Planning Commission to provide a formula regulate, or recommendation on the regulations to the City Council. And then, following that, staff and the Subcommittee would kick off Phase 2 with public outreach efforts, including public meetings, as well as the Subcommittee stakeholder meetings with the public. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation.
Great, thank you, Mr. Champa. So next, we will start with Commissioner comments. Questions, actually?
Thanks. Thanks for the report. I think you guys are doing a great job, and it's been, it's been quite a process to get to where we are today, and I applaud everybody for the hard work that they put into this. I guess my main takeaway from all of this is, do you have enough people to do this?
Yes. We have a code enforcement staff. As Jeff mentioned, we actually increased a staff member to assist in the short-term rental program.
But by one. There's a lot of moving parts to all of this. Are you sure you have enough?
We, yes.
Okay. Yeah, as far as the nuts and bolts of it, I think it makes sense. So I will, I look forward to the public comments.
Great, thank you. Mr. Murphy, have you questions for staff? Vice Chair Donor.
No, I would just say the enforcement, as far as the city's concerned, the enforcement requirements are reduced if you have an outside agency that's tracking violations, if you're also having someone else involved with collecting the TOT, and if the neighbors have the ability to make calls themselves and it's advertised, so there would be less requirements and less demand on the city's time if these regulations were approved.
All right, I've got a few questions here, if I can get my notes together. So I was looking at our, the enforcement cases, it's more of a question, I think, I'm curious than anything else, but as it comes to the financial component of enforcement, do we ever get fully recovered?
No, that's not the intent of the city's code enforcement division.
Okay, so it's a lost leader no matter what?
Yes.
Okay, so I know we're talking enforcement, for me, the most critical thing is understanding sort of A, B, C, these are the different things that happen, and how do our enforcement measures address those steps? So I think we've talked about it in the past, but I really want to understand this from a homeowner's perspective. So I'm going to put my homeowner's hat on and pretend that my neighbor STR, it's 9:00 at night, and they're having a party, and it's clearly loud. I don't know if it's over the threshold of what's allowed in Dana Point, but I know that they're being extremely loud, and what do I do?
So it's a nuisance to you as the neighbor?
Correct.
So I would encourage you to follow the neighbor of a STR owner's pamphlet, and the first step is to look up on the city's website and try and identify who your neighbor is. If you don't have your neighbor's contact information, or you don't know it personally, you can go on the city's website, you can find the green dot where you're at, you can look and get a number right now of who that owner is and/or who that manager is. Really encourage you to, you know, be the proactive good neighbor that you think you are, and take care of it yourself. The second step down would be to contact code enforcement. It's highly possible, highly feasible, that during the summer hours, during the pink hours, peak hours at 9:00 on a Friday night, that there could be code enforcement staff out there. And we need to find a way to have the public contact code. And so right now, we have it going into the main code telephone number, and hopefully we can get that information, and code officers themselves. If those two don't work, we encourage the folks to call the 24/7 hotline, and that hotline has a live person at all times, and they will take down, scribe, figure out what the complaint is. That complaint then gets emailed automatically that, at that moment, to the code officers. And so all five code officers get it. If one of them's working, if the code supervisor is paying attention on a Friday night at 9:00, we'll try and get somebody down there to fix it right away. And then the fourth option, then, is to call the Orange County Sheriff's Department non-emergency number, and contact the Sheriff's Department and have them go down there.
Okay, got it. So, just trying to think through this. So, you know, as we start to look at all the different potential changes or increases in the rules, some of the increases would be useless, and I think we can have a discussion later about it as a commission, but how do we implement policies, update these rules, and ensure that once they're updated, which may put more pressure on your staff or a third party, how do we ensure that that, sort of that A, B, C process is followed? And, you know, I have other thoughts about, you know, this third party. I guess the concern would be, it goes unanswered by the owner. So now I've got a party going on, it's 9:30, owner, I've done my part, no, I left him a message, or her, whoever owns it, I've now called the code enforcement line, I've left a message there, and I've called the 24-hour hotline, I've left another message, which goes into another email. And, you know, I don't know that tonight we can address it, but wouldn't a better way to approach that potentially would be that the minute you reach out to the 24-hour hotline and a notification to the owner also goes out, so just go into code enforcement, but, you know, this 24-hour hotline looks up that address, there's a contact number, they shoot information off there, and we start to really look at how the owners respond to these issues, as opposed to, you know, here's the information, and they need to fix it. And as opposed to, here's the information, if they don't respond, they're violated.
I like that. Unfortunately, I feel as a code enforcement staffer or officer, you really have to have eyes on the violation to ensure that violation occurred. I would just say that our current third-party hotline, and this is something John alluded to, is only willing to take down the information and email staff, that's all they're willing to do. However, there's other options out there that would either call my cell phone number, text the officer, and are willing to work and give and take a little bit more with us. And I think as we move forward with these enhanced regulations, we really look at what makes sense for the city, and see if we can't go with a different hotline agency.
Okay.
It's my recommendation.
I think that answered that question. I do want to go to, or be curious about this idea of amplified music or noise, and, you know, I think that could get really loosely defined. I mean, anything that comes out of any device today is amplified, unless it's like a record player from the 50s. I mean, it's all technology, right? So you've got Bluetooth speakers, so is that an amplified noise? Is your phone amplified? So if somebody's sitting in their backyard listening to music...
And you can hear that from the neighboring property line, that's a violation.
Right, that would be considered amplified.
And I'll just, I'll just say, personal experience, that's how it was in Palm Springs. I was with a group of people, 20 of us, and, you know, we respected that rule as we were there, because we were, you know, we were visiting a community.
Got it, okay. So as defined, it's basically any speaker that's got some electrical connection to it.
Correct.
I think those are my... The only, the question that I have on here is more of a, you know, a thought process is, you know, how do we address, and you go back and you look at the complaints, so we have 20-plus noise complaints that equal two violations, but if there's nobody there, and we're, nobody can see, you know, it's sort of the, do you hear the tree fall in the forest if nobody's there to see it? And in those cases, you know, noise is a temporary situation typically, and it can be short bursts or long bursts, but a complaint that may go to the Sheriff's Department may end up at the bottom of the list, it's an hour later, they show up, so there's no verification of the complaint, but it did happen, and, you know, I'm the neighbor, and nothing, you know, nothing changes, I just, this is a continual issue that feels like the city isn't listening. Doesn't mean that you're not. How do we address those real-time moments when there's no way to actually have somebody there in real time to visualize, you know, and see the actual issue?
So the steps we've taken to date are those, you know, roaming code enforcement hours during off-hours, or during peak visitation times. They're visiting all 137 properties, and they're, you know, doing a windshield drive-by, rolling down the windows, seeing what they hear, seeing if there are others violations occurring. Sometimes, or occasionally, when they call the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Department goes out, and they can hear and create that report. When code enforcement staff comes in, if they weren't out, they can issue a citation off of that. The other thing that's super important is, if you're calling in the hotline, please don't be anonymous. We need to come back the next day if we aren't onsite, and speak to you, and hear your problems, and hear your concerns. And that's happened as well, but when there are anonymous complaints, it's really hard to do that follow-up. And then following up on that follow-up, we'll contact the owner and have a, have a good conversation with the permit holder. These folks are, you know, here to enjoy the fruits of their labor as well, and they, it's in their best interest if their patrons and their guests are abiding by the good neighbor policies. So we'll go through that step process.
Okay. Okay, I think that was it for my questions. I know we've got, starting on page nine, is the whole list of things that, as a commission, we're going to discuss, but before that, I want to take public comment. So anybody wishing to address the Planning Commission tonight is asked to complete a request-to-speak form, which is available somewhere over there by the front door, and if you could hand that to the clerk, that would be great. In order to conduct a timely meeting, there'll be a three-minute time limit per person, and we welcome anybody and everybody to share with us your thoughts and input tonight. Do we have speakers tonight?
Yes, we have 13.
Okay, great. All right, first up, Mr. Wyatt. Former council member Wyatt.
I need to, oh, there you go. Thank you. Good evening, my name is Paul Wyatt, and I'm a resident of Dana Point. The STR ordinance has two parts. The business rules being discussed tonight, the zoning code that specifies where STR businesses are permitted to operate. If the business rules are not well thought out, the ordinance gives up many useful opportunities for innovative solutions. The current business rules, codified in Municipal Code Section 5.38, even with the modifications proposed tonight, limit the STR solutions available. The three types of STRs defined in the recent STR survey, home stays, primary residences, and non-primary residences, are all combined in the current business rules, but they are significantly different. The operating rules needed, need to be different to be effective and to address many of the concerns discussed in tonight's staff report. Examples, home stays by definition have onsite management. Primary residents are likely to require three or more nights' minimum stays, and non-primary residents require much more management and oversight. Here are some examples of how multiple STR types help craft innovative ordinances. All types do not need to be permitted in all zones, nor operate under the same rules and limits. An uncapped number of home stays could be permitted in all residential areas, and combined with a capped number of non-primary residences, permitted only in commercial zones. This addresses many of the concerns of the residents, and provides affordable visitor-serving access to the coast, helping eliminate the concerns of the Coastal Commission. STR permits could be restricted to one permit per owner. This places no additional restrictions on home stays and primary residences, but keeps investors from buying up and combining multiple properties, which addresses one of the concerns of the City Council and the residents. Home stays charging less than the Coastal Commission affordable lodging rates could have TOT waived, requiring only an annual inspection fee. This would help more people afford housing and provide affordable visitor lodging. This would satisfy the Coastal Commission concerns for affordable access to both visitors and workforce. Non-primary residents could be restricted to owners who have owned the property for five years prior to applying for an STR permit, to discourage investors from buying up affordable housing and converting it to STRs. This addresses the concern of the Council and the residents. The above examples are just a few abbreviated suggestions on how Section 5.38 could be modified to allow more effective STRs while addressing the concerns of residents and the Coastal Commission. I strongly encourage the Planning Commission tonight to define each of the three types of STRs with type-specific permitting and operating rules in Section 538 before making a recommendation to the City Council. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Next up, we have Greg Lynn.
Good evening. I've been part of this process for, since the beginning of it, and I appreciate the input. I'm actually really quite disappointed in staff, they kind of ignored the onsite management suggestion that I talked to them long and hard about it. I live in a community of eight units, condo community, and three of them are STRs, and it's literally chaos, especially in the summer, where you're three units, and they're all going, they all bring their families, they bring their friends over, we have a pool in the community, it's, it literally feels like the Holiday Inn. And by not having onsite management, not being able to control, you know, non-registered guests in effect, it's literally chaos. And I believe that one of the solutions, you know, trying to work with you guys, is that the, whoever the, because obviously, you have an owner or, and/or manager who's going to be called. Maybe they should make several daily visits to the property to make sure that their guests are actually being compliant to the, you know, the good policies that we're putting out there. Because without, with, I mean, otherwise, what you're doing is you're forcing the other homeowners to be the police, okay? And take pictures, and send, and send them into the hotline, and... And it, it, all it does is create, you know, more friction between the owners of the property by doing exactly what you guys are suggesting. It, it's really incumbent upon the person who's making the money on this, the home, the actual, the, the owner of the property that's operating the STR to actually enforce the rule. You wouldn't, you, you guys are opening up hotels in the, here. You wouldn't allow a hotel to not have any kind of management on staff, but yet you're allowing these, these units to operate completely without any kind of management. And it's incumbent upon the neighbors or to really be the police. And that's really not fair on us. And, and, you know, it's very upsetting to me to think about it. The other thing that I, that I suggested that got ignored as well is there should be density limitations. In, in condo communities, you can't have all these permits. I mean, I granted it's been, we, they're their only grandfathered in now and there's 139 of them. But I'm in a community of eight units, three of them are STRs. So, you know, I mean, to me, there should be a certain level of density. In any community that I've ever lived in, in other states, there was always a density limitation on rentals, let alone short-term rentals. So usually the numbers are somewhere between 10 and 20%. You know, that seems reasonable. To, to just allow a community of eight to, you know, have them all short-term rentals or have a significant portion of short-term rentals is just not fair. Also, I think it's important that you put in the rules that you limit the, the, whoever's on the property has to be on the lease. So in ours, there's two bedrooms, so it's usually four guests total. And then when they bring their friends and family over, there's been times where there've been 17 people that, from one unit brought to my community. And, and your, your rules don't address any of that. Anyway, and also the other last thing I want to mention is that without, by, for us going directly to the owner to speak about it, you know, basically we're avoiding all the violations and all the other issues. I think that, that there, there needs to be a mechanism in place that when, when there's a violation, it gets multi, and I think,
Could you do me a favor and wrap it up?
That it gets put on multiple places. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jose, is it Presidia?
Okay, my name is Jose Presiado. I work in Laguna Cliffs Marriott in Dana Point. And I have a lot of hours during the COVID and so have any people I know. If you were laid off, say so. Some hotels have been closed forever. More short-term rentals that competed with hotels are in that we need. Right now, please, don't allow any whole homes rentals and extended enforcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kevin Williams. Is there Kevin Williams here?
I'm Kevin Williams. One second, sorry about that. Okay, my name is Kevin Williams and I work as a buster in Orange County. And I would love to live in Dana Point. And I'd happy to share my home with travelers if I could live there. But this proposal by the city of Dana Point just eliminates the housing and the workers like me to need, like me, need to create empty hotel rooms. If you want to let people experience the coast, protect housing for workers and ask us to host travelers. I urge you not to allow any move, hold, home rentals and enforce the law that the city has right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Wayne Viap.
Well, hi. My major concern wasn't even addressed tonight, and it's dogs. I live right next door to a short-term rental.
Can you just say your name for the record, please?
Wayne Vi, yes, or Viap, fine. But dogs, we've gone through some days that are complete nightmares. We, you're allowed up to three dogs, I was informed when I called to complain once. And they said, well, that's what the, when any residence can have. But the people that rent these homes aren't residents, they're people that come to visit. They bring three of the most gigantic dogs and then leave them out in front. And there's been, I don't have air conditioning in my house. I live right close to, on Via Elavado. And we couldn't even go out to our patio almost all last summer because you try to convince a dog that we belong there and they don't. I, I'm, I'm a dog lover too, but you have no control at all. And, and the people are nice, they come home, oh, I'm so sorry, our dogs barked at you all day. But it doesn't do any good when you haven't been able to go outside. You have to keep your windows closed. It's just a constant thing. We had a part, some people that went off to Disneyland and I swear those dogs barked from first thing in the morning until late at night. And the thing is that I live, we live right on the path to the dog park. So that means that every time somebody's walking their dog there, they all go nuts. And, you know, can at least restrict it to two dogs. I'd love to see it not, allow all dogs as far as renters. You rent to the people, you don't rent to the dogs. But you cannot convince those dogs that you have any right to be on the patio or to be anywhere at your house. And there's just no way to control it. I called and complained and, and all they say is, well, they can have three dogs. What, what are you supposed to do about it? The only other thing I wanted to bring up is, is car parking. And you guys have mentioned that, that's one of your, you mentioned, but you don't realize that when people rent out these homes, they of course park their cars in front of your house because they want to leave the house, the, the space right in front of their home for their guests. And so i- if, there's always people parked that, it's a battle. As soon as that street sweeper goes by, I've got to be out there within a couple of minutes or I'm going to be stuck all day with a strange car and sometimes a gigantic SUV that you can't even see over parked in front of my house. And you need to have at least two spots off the street and you have to make people use them. And, well, anyway, I'll, I'll let it go. But it's very upsetting living next to these people. And I've got three of them on my street and it's like living in a motel, just like you said. It's terrible.
Thank you. Next up is Tony Nelson.
Good evening, my name is Tony Nelson and I live in Capistrano Beach. I'm a little disappointed in the proposed regulations that I heard tonight. I was hoping to see much tougher action, especially on illegal STRs. We were promised teeth and I don't see too many teeth. And enforcing penalties, I don't see any of that. We had tons of uncollected penalties in the past. And I'd also, like some of these people mentioned, I'd like to see real-time response or onsite management because an unsupervised hotel is an unsupervised hotel, whether it's next door or at the Ritz-Carlton. However, I have two broader points that I'd like to mention. First, you've left a lot of stakeholders out of this discussion. Every resident, whether we own or rent, will be affected by this major change to our property rights. Every one of us is what call, staff is calling an STR-interested party, but we've not all been invited to the party. We all stand to be affected not only by a mini hotel next door, but by a reduction in scarce housing stock. While 100% of all the STR owners were notified of this process, notices were sent only to those who opted in to the email. And I think that's just a couple of hundred, the, the staff can let us know, but it certainly wasn't 34,000 residents. A lot of people have no idea this is going on. Renters in particular have been completely ignored and they are a huge stakeholder. Leaving them out is just wrong. The hotel and lodging industry, which contributes over a third of our city revenue, has also not even been consulted. As hotel operators, who better to talk about how hotels, mini hotels should be regulated? And they have not even been asked. Secondly, I don't see anything in the proposed regulations that addresses a really critical problem. How will you stop other businesses that may also want to operate in our neighborhoods? Dana Point does not require any business permits. So how will you even know who's operating businesses in addition to STRs in our neighborhoods? And how will you justify allowing many hotel resident, businesses in residential areas, but I can't open a hair salon or a massage therapist place? As you know, Dana Point's permissive zoning does not allow businesses to operate in residential areas. Every STR currently operating is therefore technically illegal until the city issues an LCPA and it has not. Dana Point has successfully sued several sober living homes for violating our zoning by operating a business in a residential area. This causes a problem for you. Sober living homes like STRs allow strangers to occupy a neighborhood residence for profit for periods of less than 30 days. How can the city permit visitor-serving businesses to operate in residential areas while saying no to similar businesses that operate boarding-style operations or sober living homes? This is an important regular, regulatory issue and I'd like to hear legal counsel weigh in on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nancy Hannah.
My name is Nancy Hannah from Had Soulstormer Renick &amp; Die. On behalf of Better Neighbors, a neighborhood group that oversees short-term rental regulations. And we are here with some policy suggestions and to urge the planning department to create the infrastructure and invest in the staff necessary to enforce those STR regulations with which Dana Point adopts. Specifically, it seems that the subcommittee and staff report recommendations are overly reliant on existing city staff and law enforcement to enforce short-term rental regulations, which places an incredible and undue burden on the city. Short-term rental enforcement requires dedicated enforcement staff in order to be effective. In addition, while regulations for hosts are very important, very critical, it is also important to implement regulations on online platforms. And so Better Neighbors urges that the city include stronger requirements to ensure that STR platforms comply with local regulations. On the topic of platform accountability, while registration and licensing of STR operators is essential to date, cities have not been able to bring short-term rental units into compliance without requiring platforms themselves to comply with local regulations. Santa Monica, the city of Santa Monica is one example where they have requirements that the platforms report to the city information, including the location identif, and identity of the different operators. And they do have fines for the short-term, for the platforms if they fail to comply with these oversight requirements. An important part of enforcing short-term regulations is also to include a private right of action. This will help in two ways. First, it'll allow the neighbors and neighborhoods that are most affected by the operation of short-term rentals next door to them or across the street from them to be able to enforce the, the regulations by the people who need it the most. And also the added benefit of relieving some oversight and enforcement burden for the city because you will have community members who are able to bring complaints and to make sure that enforcement is happening on the ground. Finally, oh, was that my time? No.
You got a few more, you got another minute.
Okay. Regarding dedicated enforcement staff, cities with successful short-term rental regulations have dedicated staff to ensure compliance and enforcement. Registration fees have been one of the important ways to fund the additional staff and make sure that the short-term rental regulations can be, at least in some parts, self-sustaining. And those are all our comments. Thank you so much for your time and good luck.
Thank you. Next is Kim Tarantina, I think it's Tarantina, Tarantino, I apologize if I got that wrong.
Good evening, I'm Kim Tarantina from Capistrano Beach. So I was very happy to see one of the proposed regulations is to require the permit number to be posted with the rental. Because what's interesting is that Mr. Rosler says that there's 137 active STRs as of, I'm assuming today, yesterday. However, when I, based on the data that I've collected, as of last night at 11:00 PM, there are 270 active STRs on Airbnb and VRBO. So, and this summer, there are currently, for this summer, there are currently 388 STRs advertising their availability for September 4th. I just picked a date, September 4th, which is the Saturday of Labor Day weekend. So I, I realize, Mr. Rosler says it's like whack-a-mole, I understand that. My question is, how do you propose to deal with this? Because you're talking about creating a new pilot program when it seems like the current pilot program still has a lot of bugs to be worked out of it. The other question I have is, you're saying that you have, or the city is saying that there's approximately 450 citations that were, that had been issued since 2016, or maybe it was 468. Based on a request, a Public Records Act request, the sheriff's department is reporting 438 calls for service in the period of 2017, 2019. And per the data that was collected, they're saying that there was no coordination between the two. So if the sheriff's department was called unless they specifically communicated that to code enforcement, then that is, that's not a duplication of numbers. That's an additional 438 calls. So, and, and by the way, the data that I collected on the current short-term rentals is from a database that's used by the industry to monitor Airbnb and VRBO rentals. So again, I just question, I think that there are a lot of issues, such as a lot of the other speakers have mentioned. Lot, lot of moving parts here. So I'm just curious how you plan to address those. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ariely Carvahal.
Mi nombre es Araceli Diaz. Vivo en Dana Point y trabajo en Laguna Cliffs Marriott como housekeeper. Les pido que hagan responsable a las plataformas de su función de facilitar alquileres a corto plazo. Les pido que tengan personal dedicado a monitorear y recibir quejas cuando aparecen listados que desafían la prohibición y tomen medidas rápidas. Los Ángeles y Santa Mónica han tenido un gran éxito en frenar estos alquileres a corto plazo que intentan escapar las prohibiciones utilizando plataformas en línea como Airbnb y Verbo. Pedimos que se tomen las mismas medidas aquí en Dana Point.
So I'll be translating for Araceli, my name is Jaime. Hi, my name is Araceli, I live in Dana Point and I work in Laguna Cliffs Marriott as a housekeeper. I ask you, you make the platforms accountable and their role in facilitating short-term rentals. I ask that you have a dedicated staff to monitor and receive complaints. And when listings pop up, that they are, that are in defiance of the ban and take swift action. Los Angeles and Santa, Santa Monica have had great success in curbing these short-term rentals that try to skip the bans by using online platforms like Airbnb and Verbo. We ask that the same measures be taken here in Dana Point. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie Gomez.
Can we have the next person, Jamie's the interpreter and he'd like to go up here.
Lucina Castro Juarez. Lucina?
Hi. Hola, mi nombre es Lucy, Lucina Castro. Y vivo, vivo en Dana Point y trabajo en el hotel Laguna Cliffs Marriott como cocinera. Les pido... Les pido que adopten una medida de derecho de acción privada en referencia al alquiler a corto plazo. Necesitamos darles a nuestras comunidades una oportunidad para luchar. Necesitamos un refuerzo adicional de estos alquileres a corto plazo, al igual que Los Ángeles y Santa Mónica. En Dana Point somos un 55% de arrentadores. Thank you.
I'll be translating. Hi, my name is Lucy and I live in Dana Point and work at the Laguna Cliffs Marriott as a cook. I ask that you adopt a measure of private right of action in reference to short-term rentals. We need to give our communities a fighting chance. We need additional enforcement of these short-term rentals, just like in LA and Santa Monica. As a resident, I'm part of the 55%